Okay, I'm going to make an announcement on a change in the agenda. Item four is going to be moved to the next work session, which is review of the curriculum and training regarding sexual harassment and assault, so that we don't have to push ourselves through. And February 12th, so we will do budget and service contracts this afternoon.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And so, we are now turning to the budget. And I believe everyone has at their place the proposed budget in front of them. So I will turn this over to Ms. Quinn to start her presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know you guys must think that I was here all morning and most of the afternoon, but I will be here the rest of the afternoon as well.
And we appreciate it, Ms. Quinn, very much.
But before I get started, I wanted to go ahead and introduce Brooke Gustafson. He is a budget coordinator in our budget office. And he's stepping in while our budget director, Alice Wigginton, is recovering. So he'll be with us throughout our budget adoption.
Welcome, thank you for joining us today.
Welcome, Brooke, thank you for being here, really appreciate it.
Okay. So since the presentation that Dr. Braybrand provided, we had not received any questions. So I'm assuming you guys are all very happy with what's in the proposed budget? And you will be providing your full support?
Ms. Evans would remind me, though, that she did submit an earlier budget question. I believe we have a response now that we've provided her, is that correct, Ms. Quinn?
We will be providing her, yeah.
Momentarily.
If it hasn't been.
I wanted to catch that one early.
So today, without, we spent some time unpacking how we're investing some of our compensation dollars. But before I get there, I wanted to share that we know we have large topics still ahead of us before we approve the FY19 budget. So we know that we still have to work through the teacher BA lane options. So that's scheduled to be brought to the board in March work session.
If I could, Ms. Quinn, just on that, since I know public and other members may be listening, the BA options, we did present a fall work session, and I had proposed a three-year, 3% bonus for those in the BA lanes. This board also already approved in mid-year the tuition reimbursement program, and those cohorts are beginning. And I just sent you an email about one of the first folks taking an opportunity for that. But the board did ask for me to bring a menu of options in addition to the 3% three-year program, and that's what our plan is.
And we do have 1.1 million set aside from the 2018 mid-year budget review to put toward the teacher BA lane options. We will also bring you some additional information on substitute usage and pay recommendations in the March work session as well. And we're going to have a very busy month in March. We're also scheduled to bring you the plan for the equity resources that are needed. And then finally, in April, we will be going over the last portion of the compensation study related to the unified schedule. So all this has to be done before we actually go to the approved budget adoption in May, because this will impact next year's budget. So today, we want to spend a little bit of time, as I mentioned earlier, on teacher scale highlights and the implementation timeline for our unified schedules. So this agenda includes, in addition to teacher scale highlights, kind of sharing some additional informations on master's lane market comparison, and how this impacts the individual teachers, what we have in the FY19 proposed budget, and then again, the non-teacher scale implementation plan and next steps. So some highlights for teacher scale recommendations. As you know, in the 19 proposed budget, we have an investment of 53.1 million. And this investment is halfway to the full implementation of our future teacher scale that we shared with the board. I believe it's been over a year ago. And what it does in this FY19 scale is we are closing the gap at the beginning step and the final step on all of the teacher pay lanes. So in FY19, if this proposed budget is approved, the BA lane step one will be $50,000 as a starting teacher pay. And this is the highest among the current FY18 salary schedules in the surrounding jurisdiction. And the MA lane step one is $55,000. So we went ahead and closed any gap that we had from our FY18 scale to the future scale on that beginning teacher salaries in those pay lanes. And then we also closed the very top step as well. Closed the gap on the top step. And then the future teacher scale actually includes any future market movement, and that was incorporated into the scale when we developed it a few years ago. The next slide, you've seen this chart previously. This was also part of Dr. Braybrand's presentation. And as you could see, the green line is the proposed 2019 teacher scale for master's lane. Okay, that is with the $53.1 million investment. And that aligns with the yellow line, which is the FY18 market average. Okay?
Is it just a clarifying question?
Yeah, it is. Repeatedly, for many, many years now, we've been doing this work, we were promised to get this exact chart on the salary scale for total compensation, not just salary. Is that going to be provided today?
So on the following slide, it's not in a graphical format, but it is in a table format with the total compensation. Okay?
Dr. Braybrand, I'm just going to say, I have asked and asked and asked, and I get promised at every work session, we will finally get that, because the visual is powerful. And I will ask for it as a next step, to be sent to the board as soon as possible. But we need that, so people understand that with our ERFC, the total compensation graph looks much better, and it is important for the public and for the board to have that.
I'll make sure we consider that as a next step.
So the slide six is showing where each of the step falls within that market average. So as you could see, on step one, the very top line is FY18 market average. The next line is the FY18 scale, so that is the current scale. And then the third row is the FY18 scale as compared to the FY18 market average. So you could see that we range anywhere from 96% to 99% of that market average in FY18. Now, with the $53 million investment FY19 proposed scale, you'd see a comparison to the FY18 market. And that ranges anywhere from 98% to 102% of the FY18 market average. And then when you add the total compensation to Ms. McLaughlin's point, it does raise where our compensation is. And that does bring our ranges from 102% to 106% when you compare it to the FY18 market average, because we currently do not have the market average information for FY19. So what does all this mean to our individual teachers? I'm going to scoop back a little bit, because I could actually see that chart better than what's in front of me. As you could see, to the left of this chart, the percent increase, anywhere from 0.5% to 3%, we have.
Susan, can I just stop you for a second on this? Why we wanted to show this chart is trying to help build the transparency of what teachers are getting what in terms of salary percentage changes. So you can get an idea within the organization where our teachers would be and the kind of salary increases they would be getting. And we thought this would be a nice visual that can really help explain it to, frankly, our staff and for you all, so that there's not confusion about who's getting what when we talk about making those changes. So this is listening to the board, trying to take some of that feedback and think about a way to share it in a way that actually improves clarity and not confusion. So we are trying to listen, we are trying to listen as we do it. And I know we didn't have it on a graph, Ms. McLaughlin, but that last line did add the total compensation in. It just wasn't put into the graph.
Now, let me just clarify that. This particular chart includes the step increase as well as the investment we're making into the scale. Okay, so to an impact to a teacher. So I know I started with the left chart, but on the right chart, kind of shows you where those increases are. So anything that's highlighted in teal is what I see. So blue on the screen is where the increases are greater than 7%. Okay, so any teachers on those steps will see an increase greater than 7%. Where it's not highlighted, so in white, is where you'll see an increase between 5.1 and 7%. Okay? And where it's highlighted in yellow, the increase ranges from 3.1% to 5%. And where it's in the dark blue, the increase is less than or equal to 3%. Okay? And on the right side of the screen, you could see how many employees and what percentage of the employees will be receiving those increases. So you could see over 50% of our teachers, 53.2% of our teachers, over 8,000, will be receiving an increase that's greater than 7%.
That's a big nugget. That's a big nugget. And a lot of those folks are right in sort of the middle or early-middle part of their career. And that's trying, that whole goal of getting them to higher salary and higher compensation earlier in their career.
Okay.
You're not finished with your presentation?
No, I'm going to go through a couple more pages.
Yes, I'll put you on the list, okay.
So I also wanted to share how many employees are classified as those grandfathered employees. So those are the employees that were on those BA lanes where their current maximum is greater than the new maximum on the new teacher scale. So we have 419 employees, 2.8% of the total teachers, that are on those grandfathered steps. And then we have those teachers who have already reached the maximum of their pay lane salary. So that would be about 488 employees, 3.2% of our teacher pool, that have already reached the maximum. So when you look at this, those teachers on the maximum salary, currently, there are no increases proposed in the budget. However, we would recommend, similar to what the board approved last year, that we would provide a some level of bonus for those teachers. So that would be the 488 teachers. And using one-time funding, so maybe at year-end, when there's available funding, providing a bonus for those teachers that will not see an increase. And then we will know more in March, the options that the board approves for those teachers that are grandfathered on those BA lanes. So for on average.
Let me just do one more thing, just because of my time. This is clarity about who gets what. It's also about who's not getting anything, and what we might propose for those that are already at the top in that maximum salary, about perhaps getting a bonus. In addition to talking about those BA lane teachers, who we still haven't made a final determination about, I proposed a three-year 3% in the fall, and we're going to look at it in March.
And just to further clarify, before it went up to step 23, correct? For the.
For bachelor's lanes, yes.
So just so it's not that entire blank space.
Correct. So now, we wanted to talk a little bit about our non-teacher scale employees. And just to kind of give a quick overview of who is on those non-teacher scales, I think this was provided during our compensation study, but we wanted to kind of remind you again who is on which schedule. So Schedule A is for our overtime-eligible positions. So these are your non-exempt employees. I always get that backwards, so I have to actually think about it. So these folks are overtime-eligible, and they are your office assistants, custodians, and such. And Schedule B are your professional-level positions, like your social workers, your analysts, your specialists. And Schedule C is your senior management positions, your directors, your executive principals. So those three schedules, we are still working on and will be bringing to the board in the April work session. Schedule H, which was implemented in FY18, are for your contracted hourly positions. These are folks like your bus drivers, parent liaisons, and food service workers that are on an hourly basis. And then you have your school-based administrators. These are all your school leadership positions, principals, APs, directors of student services, activities, associate principals, any administrators at the school level. And then we have the classroom instructional support. This scale was also implemented in FY2018. And these provide the salary lanes for your instructional assistants, public health training assistants, and public health attendants. So just a quick background and definition on these various schedules. So for the 17.9 million set aside or the investment we have for non-teacher scales in the FY2019 proposed budget, is for these various scales. So we were trying to provide some information as to how far the 17.9 million has to go. You heard me say that we have yet to implement or provide you the salary schedules for Schedule A, B, and C of the unified scale. So we're still working on developing those scales. The school-based administrators, the scale has been developed, and we shared that with the board, I believe, about a year and a half ago as well. The school-based administrator, the cost is about $900,000 to implement that scale. We just have yet to implement that scale. And then, as I mentioned, Schedule A, B, and C to be provided in the April work session. And then that very last column, where it says MSA needed and has a question mark, and we have yes all the way down. And that is because for non-teacher scales, we're implementing the scales vastly different from how we have recommended implementing the teacher's new scale. So for teachers, we kept the step integrity, so that if you were currently on a master's lane, step nine, you continue to stay on master's lane, step nine, as we implemented the new scale. For all these other scales, we are placing you closest to what you're making, based on a market-based salary lane. Okay? So they don't see, or they will not see, the increases that the teachers have been experiencing. So as we implement these scales, we need to go ahead and apply the market scale adjustment to the entire scale. So the 17.9 million that we have in the proposed budget must cover the implementation of the school-based administrators as well as Schedules A, B, and C of the unified scale. And then any additional remaining funding will be applied to a market scale adjustment for these various, the six scales that's on this chart. Okay? And the value, just for a reference, 1% market scale adjustment is $7.9 million for these scales together. Value of a 1% market scale adjustment is $7.9 million.
Excuse me, while we're on this, could you add that language that you just said, Ms. Quinn, on these folks will, this is a traditional change in a market scale, which is the way we usually do it, is that they go to the next level, the closest level on the new scale. If you could, on this slide, just update that, fix that language so that we understand that?
Okay.
Because that's an important difference, so that when we are asked, that we understand that. Because if you haven't been through this kind of adjustment, that's complicated.
Right, right.
Just add it to the slide, and then we can use it.
We could go ahead and add that to this slide. And then, those actually covered a lot of the slides we have prepared for today. And we just wanted to put a budget question process out there. Not that we're looking for more or any budget questions, but if you had a question that needed a response, if you go ahead and submit an email to either Marty or myself, the COO, and CC, the superintendent, budget chair, budget vice chair, and the clerk of the board. And again, indicate a priority, one, two, or three. One, meaning that you need it for an upcoming vote. So if you needed something back prior to the advertised budget, if you could go ahead and give us Priority One, we'll address those first. And Priority Two is it's important to an upcoming decision, but not urgently needed. So maybe that's at the approved stage. And then Priority Three is would like to know, but information not needed for imminent decision. So that'll help us prioritize the work. And with the short staff we have in the budget office, we're hoping to meet your expectations, but this will help us manage the expectations of the board and the community. And then we're wrapping it up with the budget calendar. And we realized on the budget calendar, we actually did not have the budget work sessions on that calendar. We're going to go ahead and update that. But for now, you could see the upcoming school budget work sessions. February 1, that's the work session before the advertise, and that's the televised work session at Luther-Jackson. Okay? And then you adopt your advertised budget on February 8. And then there's a budget work session each of the following month until the adoption of the FY2019 approved budget. And then if I could just highlight one more date, and that's February 27. And that is the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, where we would go and update any requirements to our budget needs.
Excellent, thank you. I have a couple of board members. I appreciate you being very succinct, Ms. Quinn. And also, the Priority One, Two, and Three is similar to what we've had in the past, and I think that will help all of us get organized. So Ms. Palchek, you're first, to be followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you very much. And, sorry, I'm getting there. I really appreciate the update with both the, sorry, the full compensation, but also having the scale and seeing that on there is very helpful. And most of my questions and advocacy, I guess, will have to wait until March. I am very interested in looking to see what we can do, especially for our grandfathered BA lane teachers, and what options you are bringing to us. I guess, in the meantime, so just, and I think Dr. Braybrand clarified it, but just to be 100% clear on the representation on Slide 7. So grandfathered employees, we are, that is the entirety of employees who are on any of the BA lanes past step 19, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct. So there are 419 in that category. And then maximum salary is on any of our scales, those who will not see any step increases, is that correct?
Correct, they have already reached the maximum of their salary lane.
But not the grandfathered employees?
Including those grandfathered employees that were at the prior maximum.
Okay. At the prior, but they're not, no one's double-counted there. You're either in the grandfathered or in the.
Correct, you're either grandfathered, or you're on the maximum.
Okay, perfect. And so, in the way we see that in our lane, is that's where ours, on the graph, I believe, Slide 5, tapers off, or other systems are still rising, is that this is where we are tapering off near the end. But that's master, so that's not BA. So we don't really have a graph of BA in comparison.
We don't have the updated graph of the BA lanes, but yes, but it tapers off at step 19. But you could also see the average not being as high. But there are a few other jurisdictions that continues to trend upward.
Yeah, because for my very initial research, I hope we can get this graph for BA lane when we talk about it in March, because my initial research.
Sure.
I was trying to find what other systems are doing in comparison, and just wanted to see that.
One of the things I think I shared with you in the budget presentation, met with the new executive director, we've got to sell ERFC a whole lot more than we have. We've under-marketed that. Even when we finish with what we've got here, at the end, we're going to be a little bit below. But what we've got to talk about is the value added of our local retirement piece. And he is willing to think out of the box. It's just so exciting, there's a lot of out-of-the-box folks coming in, willing to look at it differently, and we've got to start making that sale. And we've got to make it earlier, because some of the teachers that are leaving, some are leaving within the first five years that Dr. Ramey's talked about. But we want to look at those mid-career teachers here in Fairfax, the one that wrote me who was in year nine and moved to another jurisdiction. We don't want them leaving. We want them to stay and finish their career. One, they're going to get more career earnings earlier. And then at the end of the career, even if they're still a touch below the market at that step, with the ERFC, the total compensation, it doesn't make sense to leave Fairfax. So we're hopeful to do a better job really selling this and making sure our own employees truly understand what we're offering them.
I'm with you, but before we sell it, I think we want to see it clearly.
Okay.
And I guess at that point, really, and like Ms. McLaughlin would say, if this is what we're selling, I really do want to see the comparison. If we're going to be, for the BA, focusing on the full compensation, I think it would be really important to see how we compare to others. Because we've seen the masters quite a bit, so I'd like to see the BA lane. And then the other one is a little bit silly. I love Slide 7, but I would just ask, the colors to me, took me a little while to really fully understand how the colors matched up and visually what they were showing. So if we could maybe, I'm not an artist, but order the colors more visually in a way, maybe lighter colors, starting on one end and gradually getting darker, so we can better, more easily interpret the graph. If that is not too difficult, I would appreciate that. But I do really appreciate this graph. I think it's wonderful, and it just took me a little bit, so I want to make sure people who first look at it can see what we're trying to point out. Thank you so much.
Ms. Schultz?
Actually, I, you can stay right here, because this is my first place. I actually have a problem with this graph. And I feel like it's Groundhog Day, I know we're a little early, but once again, we're at percentages and not numbers. And I think the raw numbers for this table are crucial. I don't care if you give us two tables, if that's the easiest way to show it, but to show where the distribution of, for example, the 53% are, I think it's important to understand where those numbers fall.
Ms. Schultz, do you mean the distribution of 53 million? Is that what you're saying, when you said 53%?
No, the 53.2%. So that, I won't call it Confederate blue, but.
It's teal on my page.
The slate blue, those are all percentages, but there's individuals that are behind there that make up the 53.2%, the 8,063. So that table should show the raw numbers. So we should be able to understand.
Ah, I see.
You want the number of teachers at each step?
Yeah, and the totals at the bottom, so that we understand. Because now you understand the order of magnitude of how many people we're talking in each, you know, with the total. So that's the first thing. The second question, or second, no, that was a point, this is a question. Are we saying that the grandfathered employees and the maximum salary employees, are those two circles on a Venn diagram that don't intersect? Or are the grandfathered employees a subset of the maximum salary?
They're separate, right? So let's say, if you look at the BA lanes, we have folks in those grandfather steps, BA 20, 21, 22, 23. We don't show any increases, because we haven't approved any increases for those employees yet. And we don't have any step increases, so they're not reflected.
You're saying it's 907 employees, not 488?
There's 419 that are in-between steps, and there's 408 that are at the maximum salary lane, even in the prior scale. and there's 408 that are at the maximum salary lane, even in the prior scale.
I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I don't remember the figure being that high. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised that we're talking 907 employees.
We had close to, I believe, around 800 last year, so as people move further into the maximum scale. It was close to 800 last year.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I didn't realize that the magnitude of the people that we were providing, you know, a alternate bonus, or, you know, some means. Because now, you know, now we're approximating 1,000 employees that fall outside of, of the salary scale. Right?
So, and then I would keep those two groups of employees separate, only because the ones that have already reached the maximum, any salary increases that they saw prior years or going forward, typically is your market scale adjustment, right? 'Cause they don't have any more steps to move upward in their salary lane. So we kinda see those employees separately, and...
But what we're also saying is, is those 488 at the maximum salary, we don't necessarily include at an MSA, or we do include in an MSA?
We don't currently, 'cause we're still in the process of implementing the teacher scale. But once the scale is fully implemented, if the Board approves a 1% market scale adjustment, it would move the entire scale up, so those folks would also see an increase in their pay.
So that brings me to my second point, in terms of the magnitude of what's displayed here. What's missing are the potential associated dollars for particularly the grandfathered and the maximum salary of, you know...
You're correct.
Because 3.2%, there's nothing, you know, germane in terms of dollars that's associated with that. You need to...
So we could provide that information. And I think with the BA options, when we brought the options forward, I think back in November or December, the 3% bonus each year was about $1.1 million. So we could go ahead and add that, saying a 3% bonus is $1.1 million. And then, for those employees on the maximum, 1% bonus for those employees, the 488 would be around $500,000. So we could add that as well.
Whatever it is, you need to attribute the number of people to the percentages. And then, when you have the number of people and the percentages, we need to attribute dollars.
You want numbers and money.
I know that, that may seem like an unusual request when we're talking about the budget, but...
But listen, this is exactly, this is exactly why we're doing this. So we get the clarity, and we're not, right? We're not in the summer going, "Oh, my God, it was confusing." It's a great question.
Numbers and money.
Honestly, I wanna tell you this, because this is Marty and Susan coming to me and said, "We need to share this." I'm like, "You think we need to share this?" Look, I didn't get a lot of questions. "Yes, Scott, we need to share this," because remember, this is the clarity that you've been hearing about. And the bottom line is, there's little things in showing it to you now that can actually make this easier for everyone in the organization and outside in the community to see behind, we have a budget that pays our people. So the cleaner it is, the clearer it is, the less confusing it is, the better coloring it is. I'm not kidding.
Right.
The more that average person takes a look and gets all the answers in one place, it makes your job easier. Honestly, let's be honest, it makes my job easier.
Right. That's why I said...
And that's why we're doing this.
This provides a lot, a lot more questions for me. And then, I don't think that there's any reason why...
Before you go on, Elizabeth, did you have a next step that you wanted to articulate?
She wanted numbers and money on those.
So you want...
Yeah, I want the numbers, and I want the money.
And we could put the money there, but... If you could clarify, so, so the Clerk can write it down as we go. You, you want the numbers on what?
I want, I want the table, the table on 7 to reflect not only the percentages, but also the actual number of employees reflected in the table on the left.
Yes.
And then, I also want the dollar value associated with any potential increase for the subcategories.
And we could provide that dollar value. My only caveat is, the Board hasn't made a decision on what that increase would be, and hence why we didn't provide it there, but we'll give it as FYI, that 1% bonus value.
We can give the estimate of the 3% that we presented in the fall, I think we could, Susan. And then, the 1% for the maximum salary.
That was, I understand the order of magnitude. I just wanted to put that caveat out there before everyone.
And then, I also think that you should be able to indicate, because they're two small numbers, where in the table on the right, the grandfathered and maximum salary individuals sit. And it may, it may have to be a footnote or something, but they're, they're, they're probably in the last two columns, or maybe in the last three columns, distributed. We should be, you should be able to highlight, you know, I don't know, a color around a box or something that, where those 907 employees are.
Sure. We'll, we'll try to indicate that.
Right. And then, the...
Can you wait, hold on, just to make sure this works? Because what Elizabeth is asking for is really very important, and will help us all. Put them on two separate pieces of paper, two separate slides, big, big, so the people in one glance, particularly the one that has so many numbers on it, 'cause you're adding that many columns. But this will clarify and answer lots and lots of questions.
With totals at the bottom of each of the columns. Or, and potentially even at the end of the rows. And then, the last point, Dr. Braybrand, was to something that you said, where you said, "We have to sell ERFC a lot more." I think you need, you know, there's a Paul Harvey rest of the story that goes with that. And there is an ellipsis. Or what? And I, I think, I think, painting for us the breadth of the picture, which is, look, as we go forward, this is what I would recommend. And that the, the health of ERFC, you know, it's, it's almost a three-pronged, you know, outcome. One, if we continue as we are, what happens? Two, if we upsell ERFC and there's, there's employee buy-in, what that looks like? And then, what happens if it doesn't? Because we need to start to arm ourselves with, again, proactive information on, you know, if things, this is the information, this is the information in context. Now, you all need to start making decisions, whether it's now, in the next budget cycle, or in three budget cycles, that we have to start measuring against something. And the measuring stick, I think, begins, because I think your understanding, really, you came in with the understanding of where we were on ERFC. But the potential exists that it may not, you know, may not do as you're purporting. And so, if that doesn't happen, let's throw down the marker now of, okay, when we look in the rearview mirror and it hasn't changed. Or if it has changed, but not by X amount, or not, not by what our expectations are, then what?
Ms. McLaughlin?
So, I guess the first thing I wanted to look at is the, I guess it was Slide 5, under the, the graph for the teacher salary comparison. So, I appreciate Dr. Braybrand that you and staff will be able to provide us this graph on total compensation, not just salary, to the next slide, that, the numbers. Here's my question. If you look at the red dotted line that says, "Future projected market average", and then you look at the gold line, which says FY18 market average, what I can't figure out is, watch that yellow and red line all the way up. And it's saying future versus the market average. I mean, why, why is there...
When we built the future teacher scale, which was almost two years ago, we had to project where we thought the market average would be, because we knew it was gonna take us multiple years to get there.
Sure. Right.
So, when we built that, what we did was, we increased that market by a percent each year when we had originally built that, you know, when we, I think when, when it was originally built, we were thinking it would take three or four years for us to reach that market. So when we took the original market scale in FY16, we increased that market average. So...
But I wanna make sure I'm reading this chart correctly, and I apologize, but I know time is limited, so I just wanna go to where my question is. So, the gold line is right now, FY18 market average. So, the red dotted line, if one were to read this chart, might get the sense of, oh, gosh, look where we are on the projected market average, still. For, because it's, it's up above everything all the way. The gold is actually, as we understand it in real time, where the market average is here in the region versus the blue line, right? Which is where we are. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, but because it's saying projected market average, am I... The only one looking at this where it kinda makes it look like, wow, there's this huge gap, and actually, there...
Susan, remember, we, I remember when we had this dialogue. When you all did that, you projected the market average in what year? What year was that, the red one?
I think it was 2021.
Right. So, maybe that's the nugget there when we do it. It's, it's trying to think ahead three, four more years, Megan, of where the market would be. So, we're trying to, we're trying to give a sense of dynamism. We're getting, we gotta catch up to where the market is now, which is the point. We're in blue. This can catch us to, what we propose for next year could get us almost really to what the market average is this year, but the market keeps changing. Loudoun County has asked for an 8% transfer from the Board of Supervisors. So the market keeps changing, right? Even as we're asking, others do. And that's what the, that's the dynamic piece of the, the red. And that's, that's built, that's pegged. Maybe that's the confusion we could clear up. It's pegged at 2021. So we've already done a rhythm of how much we project the market will go up each year till 2021.
So the purple line is the future teacher scale. When we're fully implemented, is the purple line, okay? Where you see that we're more aggressive at the beginning of that lane. So that's above your dash line, which is the projected market average. So when we're done implementing the scale, yes, that's the objective. That's going to be above that dotted line, and then trail off when you get to the top.
Right. The reason why I think I'm not a fan of this chart is because if you go to Slide 6, the very next one, and I really appreciate whoever, you can go to Slide 6, somebody. What I really like about this one is it is far more clear that it's saying, you know, if you look at FY18 scale, that's, that's where we are now. We're at 98, 99%. There's some parts that it's a 96%, but we are so close. And if we put through this next change, you look across the board, and we're anywhere from 98 at the final step, but otherwise, we're 99 to 102% of the market average. And then, as a result, and even if you don't go to total compensation, which is the ERFC piece, being able to say to our employees, "No, working in Fairfax County actually does put you at the market average. You're not losing money. And in fact, by being here with us and having ERFC, if we put these changes in just for this next year alone, you're gonna be above the market average by being here and having that valuable pension addition." And I guess, when you look at, for the Masters, yeah. But when you look at the language we're using on Slide 4, it says, "Our investment is halfway to the full implementation of the teacher scale." I mean, that could be in terms of just dollar value. But depending on how the person hears that sentence, it sounds like the gap between what I should be getting paid versus what I am getting paid, I'm only halfway there with getting, you know, a fair market val, a fair market salary compared if I worked in one of the other Shrine jurisdictions. So, I'm, I'm struggling with that second bullet point. I think it, it sends a confusing message. And I actually think, we, right now, maybe it's just timing, so maybe do it right after the budget, in May. But if we aren't shouting from the rooftops on this from a recruitment standpoint...
Don't worry.
Because we are, right now, I'm out in my Braddock community, and all people talk about, including my supervisor, is, "That darn school board and that darn Fairfax County, it's under, you know, compensating our teachers, and we're losing them all the time left and right." And that's actually not the story. It's not true. I mean, we, we know our turnover rates and our vacancy rates are no different than the national average. And this is a really good story, a really good story. And I, I'm still worried that I don't really hear the good story coming out, and I worry that we're losing teachers under the false impression that they don't think that they're being compensated well enough here. I, I, so, I, I would say for that chart, 5, one thing for people to consider, Dr. Braybrand, Ms. Quinn, my colleagues, why do we have it all overlying on top of each other? Why not have one that says, "Here's the market average right now, and here's where we are"? And you would see the gold and the green together. And then, it would be, "Here's where we hope to be, and here's where we're projecting it", and that's the blue and the red dotted line. Then, I think you would have seen both of them, or maybe it was purple. It was purple to red dotted. But they, they're, they're a lot closer.
Dr. Braybrand did a much better job when he presented the budget with this particular chart, 'cause we did kinda go through it line by line. I just went through it really fast, but to your point, we could have it on multiple pages, and we did consider that. But again, with...
Yeah, I just think this ends up creating the, the impression that there's much bigger gaps between our compensation and what we want it to be. And teasing them out might be better.
Yeah, and I think there are two sides of each story, right? So to your point, I think this is a great story. Paying teachers now is why Dr. Braybrand included the $53 million. That's the largest investment that we had recommended so far, right? In doing the teacher scale. But this was to also show that, if you wanted to get to that final scale, we're still halfway to that point. But to your point, it, it is a great story that we should be sharing with our teachers. And we're very excited, and Dr. Ramey's very excited, 'cause we are now at $50,000 for our beginning teacher salary, 'cause we did close that gap.
That's great. I do wanna say, I appreciate Ms. Palczek bringing up about our bachelor teachers. I was one of the Board members that absolutely said, we, we have to look at that grandfathering thing, and it's been concerning to me that we're kinda still trying to figure out how they're gonna fall out in all of this. So, that's gonna take some real conversation about who we grandfather, where they are. I know that number at 419, that's just to hit that Step 19 or 20, correct? But...
Those are all the employees between Steps 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Okay. So the thing to keep in mind is, we've got some teachers that when we came up with this freezing, or removing the Step 19 to 23, that there are, there's teachers who are still one year from that, and one year from that. And when, so one of the things we talked about was, in my budget pre-work session, was asking staff to give us, who's at Step, like, hard numbers? Which teachers right now are at Bachelor Step 15, Step 16, 17, 18, 19? And maybe that's what we'll be getting in March, because that's gonna, I think, be a very important thing for the Board to figure out, at what point do we say, "You are part of that grandfathered group", and which part, it's, "You've got enough time in your career"? 'Cause I think everybody can appreciate, it, it's not necessarily easy for some teachers who are mid-career to suddenly go study for a master's degree and still be great teachers in the classroom. So, you know, we wanna be, do, look at that one there. And then, I think, I think that kinda covers my questions for now. But I do wanna compliment Susan and Marty. This Page 7 is extremely helpful, I think, especially for our employees to set expectations of where, where they're gonna fall. I really applaud you for that.
Okay. I have Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Any other Board members who... Any other board members who want to take a turn before Ms. Darnett Kofax and I take a turn? Give me the signal, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And this chart is very good. I think it'll be even more helpful once you add the employee numbers and the dollar amounts to it. I think that will be very helpful. I do have a question and it's something that is following on on the discussion about the BA lanes and investment in bonuses versus salaries. And so I think it would be helpful for us if we could have, if you go to page, I guess it's figure six, next page, is that the, nope, that's not it, the other way, the chart, keep going back. Uh, it was the one that shows the earnings comparison by step in the master's lane and where we're at on market average. There. It would be very helpful to have a similar chart for the BA lanes because that will allow us to really understand and be able to have that informed discussion with community members who are concerned about it. And my, the reason I raise this is we're all aware that there is a nationwide teacher shortage. And there are many kid, young people who come out of school with their BA and are ready to go to work, but they are also carrying huge debt. And so their ability, their flexibility to immediately go and get their masters becomes more difficult over time. And so until they pay down some of that debt. So it would be helpful to see where the earnings comparisons are between the BA and the masters. And that will also help in talking to young people about, you know, what their options are. Additionally, I think, following up on this, we talked about the objective being that we wanted to be be between ninety-five and a hundred and five percent of the market. And so following on on how we position our conversations about this, I think what we, when we say that we're only halfway there, that does create a a different messaging point than where we were a year ago when we said our objective is between, is to be between ninety-five and a hundred and five percent. I think that the messaging is that Fairfax County Public Schools has always prided itself in attracting the best and the brightest by being a market leader in our compensation. And this allows us to regain that market leadership in attracting and retaining top-notch teachers. Because I don't know how you go out and say we're only halfway there with this chart. It's not that I don't believe we should make the investment, it's how we sell it.
It's it's very good feedback. One of the, one of the realities is, and and I I don't have the answer, but I just want to say, we're there. If we, if this budget passes, we're there in this market right now in 2018. We're at the market. That's the good news story. We're at the market right now. We had a set of predictions built in when this was built and we don't know what it will look like because we don't know what every other division will have done when it comes to May. So I think the point is, we we made a huge investment. We really got to maximize the positive of that. And then in the appropriate way, figure out, well, there still may be some market tweaking, which may even be less, depending on what everybody else does. That's the, that's the tough thing. In a one way, in that graph, we're trying to do multiple things. We're trying to show where we are now, how we can get to the market and talk about three or four years. And maybe what I, what I'm hearing is that that doesn't always help strengthen our message to our employees and to potential employees about how good we are. And that's that's positive feedback for us to reflect on.
I just want to see us take off language that says, when we do this, we're only halfway there.
Okay.
Because that really makes it seem disingenuous and that's not who we are.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I have Ms. Darnett Kofax next.
Thank you. These are, I, following Ms. Corbett Sanders, I wanted to make sure that that's Dr. Braybrand, what you said, we are there in this market at this time if these changes go through. So I I do have a question. Have we been working with our teachers groups to run some of these things by? Have we talked, have we been talking to them and making sure?
Yes, we've been, we've been talking with the teachers and talking about opportunities to sort of have a joint message around this work. And we've had one meeting and I think we have another one coming up soon as we get through the spring part of this budget process. But they're very excited about what we've seen. And I've only gotten positive feedback. I think there's obviously more. I think I sent something out today, right, Chris Donahue, a little video? Didn't I do a budget video today? So I'm going to keep looking at multiple ways and working with the associations to make sure they have the story. I also think I want to say at this time, and Chris, I know I'm gambling, but I think it's already true, I am already personally scheduled to meet with teachers on the BA lanes. Is that correct? Is that right, Dr. Ramey? I will be meeting with those teachers myself prior to the time that you all have your work session in March.
Good, because that that'll be good feedback because I guess this is Ms. Strauss too because I, the process has changed a little bit, but the policy where there's board members meeting with the teachers associations, we had those meetings, I just haven't, forty-five, ten meetings?
It's the forty-five, ten where they're just
Right, there's two board members, but I I I understand. It's the chair and another board member. I understand that because I was instrumental in putting those together. But I haven't been asked for like a year and a half, so I guess it's time? Or we, do we, are we doing them monthly or bi-monthly? How was?
We are, yeah, quarterly. They're not very, we don't meet very often and it's
Because it used to be a more regular schedule.
Yeah.
I think it's quarterly.
So I I think we need to, we need to kind of get a hold on where we, where we were and how that's changed. And because I I asked that question because normally I felt like I was kind of in the loop, but I'd also been the budget chair and the chair. But the forty-five, ten meetings also help keep some of the other board members, you know, attuned and and working with the teachers groups. So I have not, if we could, if I could ask the chair and vice chair to kind of just look at the scheduling for that, I would appreciate that.
Would you like that as a next step?
Yes, please. The forty-five, I don't know, we call them forty-five, ten because that's the policy, but you know, it's, yeah, we're still calling that, okay, all right. So everybody knows.
We've met twice since the beginning of the year.
Okay, all right, all right. So, um, well, that's good. So you're beginning the school year, Janie?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, all right, all right. Thank you, this school year. All right. And then finally, I guess, again, just clarification around, you know, many of my colleagues have asked for this and have to include the benefits. I guess, Dr. Braybrand, I'm asking to, to you or Ms. Quinn, is that going to be easy to do? Because, you know, when we did the compensation study, it was months and we did a full consultant's fee, but to include the benefit, to include the ERFC and to sell that, is that something we can do easily?
We have been using an average, so we should be able to provide it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss? I'm going to say the the challenge with this material at this time in the year is that this is our ask to the Board of Supervisors. We certainly hope that they will give us what we're asking for, but as we all know, we'll have to wait and see. And what we use as a marketing tool to hire people since, particularly since we now encourage earlier hiring, years and years ago, you didn't hire until the budget was done, now we hire before the budget was done. So it is, the, whatever we are putting out has two different audiences that conflict in their message. And it just is is a difficult PR situation because if we initially say kumbaya right now before the Board of Supervisors have indicated what they're going to fund us, that perhaps does not necessarily advantage us in that ask. And yet we we are trying to market ourselves to be able to hire as many top-notch teachers as possible. So we have, we have given ourselves an impossible task. So I think
Excuse me, can I, can I comment a little bit on that about about the marketing?
Sure, yes, because it's your task.
And there are a lot of different pieces that we try to tout when we go out and recruit at different places. And of course, our salary is one. And and we do tell our teachers that we think we provide competitive salary and benefits and that it's important. And so we give that general message that teacher compensation is important. And you look at Fairfax, you look at the investment we're making that we have made and the ongoing investment we're making, that's how we sell that. We we do understand that we're talking to a variety of, a variety of audiences through this work, internal, external, new teachers, teachers that have been with us that are mid-career. And so we're constantly juggling those messages as we look at the different audiences that are in front of us. And so it's something that we do take on the road, the investment in the beginning of the salary scale is important, you know? We go to, we go to hiring fairs and you'll look around and the districts that believe they have high starting salaries will have big signs that sit on the middle of their table. Houston ISD comes to mind. It's the biggest sign they have on their table. It just says, here's our starting salary.
And what is it? Do you know? I'm just curious.
I I don't, I'm sorry. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's one of those things. And so divisions find a variety of ways to try to attract talent to their tables to start those conversations.
And I guess what I'm saying is that these slides are not necessarily what you are going to take to put on a poster to market. These, and the the initial audience for these slides is the Board of Supervisors in our own community here in Fairfax. So the people understand we really, really need to to fund this.
Correct. We're not having, if they ask, you know, it's important for our folks to know this information, but when we're out recruiting, we're not having in-depth conversations on these pieces.
You don't necessarily pull out this budget presentation for this work session.
Right, we talk about all the great different things that are available to teachers beyond just their salary, professional development, the communities they get to serve, and so all the different great pieces that that make Fairfax County what it is.
Right, great, thank you. So I will take a short turn and I think this is a perfect segue because I I know you said it, Ms. Quinn, but I think it bears repeating that the superintendent's proposal does bring us all the way on the beginning salary, correct?
That's correct.
So that, so we're not halfway there, we're all the way there. And hopefully, Dr. Ramey, that that helps you with that sign. If we, because the fifty thousand is 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 step one BA lane?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And so I I I certainly support the thrust of this budget. I think we've got the right priority, particularly with focusing on the teacher compensation. And I think it's, it was great that you also decided to bring our beginning salaries all the way up to 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 scale. I I thought that was, that was an excellent idea. My only question, which won't surprise you, has to do with Schedule H. If we could go to schedule, wherever we noted Schedule H, I think it was on the slide that talked about the seventeen point nine, if we could go to that. Right, so we talked, last year we did do a significant amount for our parent liaisons and and that was very important. And I've I've heard from parent liaisons that they are very pleased with that. We we did not go all the way, however, you know, we we didn't get to some of our parent liaisons. We provided benefits for those who work thirty hours or more. So one of the things I'd like to be reminded about on this with Schedule H, it's because it's bus drivers, food service workers and parent liaisons, the bus drivers are, tell me about their their benefits, how many hours do they have to work to get retirement and full benefits and or full benefits? Or is that, is that a, is that a question for Dr. Ramey?
It's less than full time. I I have fingers going up back there, four hours a day.
Four hours a day, so does that translate to twenty? So so bus drivers get both health care, health care, health insurance and pensions?
Correct.
When they, when they work twenty hours? And what about food service workers?
I believe it's the same.
And that's, I'm seeing fingers back there, too?
Three hours a day.
Three hours a day, so that would be fifteen plus hours. Okay, so I have asked a budget question and thank you for getting me the the answer. To bring parent liaisons up to parity on the Schedule H scale, we still have a ways to go in terms of if we wanted to provide insurance for those with twenty, between twenty and twenty-nine hours, which, who aren't covered now and perhaps do retirement benefits as well. So we we have a ways to go. I would, I would hope we could move the, move a little bit farther this year. So I I will be working with you and with my colleagues to see if we can can push that a little bit more. Because I do think, I would hope that our goal would be to bring parent liaisons up to where we are currently with our bus drivers and with our food service workers. So so it would be on the same, there's a, so it would be on the same, the, basically the same scale rather than, right now, the parent liaisons have to work thirty hours or more to receive health insurance. And, yeah, full benefits, to receive full benefits. So now with with our current, so just to to alert my colleagues that I I hope we can can move a bit more this year on that. Under the current version of this, bus driver salaries, we're waiting to see, is that, is that correct? Do do they get a, do they get an increase this year in the the way it's currently written or no?
Everyone, if they're eligible, will get a step increase. So everyone on all of these scales will get a step increase.
And are Schedule H eligible?
Schedule H including. So bus drivers, food service workers, parent liaisons, they will get a step.
So the only question we remains is whether or not we'll have enough funding for an MSA.
Correct.
Okay, so so, but they will get it, okay. So that was my only question about that because I know we certainly need competitive salaries for our bus drivers. You know, we just, next door, we, Loudoun County increased its pay for bus drivers too. So again, that's always, you know, we're, we're, we're always competing with with other jurisdictions there. So are there other questions before we go to next steps? I don't see any hands, so if you'd pull up the next steps, we can go through each one of those. All right, Ms. McLaughlin, that first one is yours, provide graph showing total compensation, not just salaries. Does that capture it? Could I see a show of hands of how many people support doing that? Show of hands? Okay, that's a majority. Okay, so that one, compare BA lane data to other jurisdictions. Ms. Palchek, does that? I guess she stepped away. Compare BA lane to other jurisdictions. That was you, okay. Yeah, I didn't have that from Dahlia. Oh, so you wanted a similar chart like we have on page six for BAs?
Correct.
Yes. So, okay, so you're, you basically want the the page six chart, but for BA lanes rather than masters. Is that the simple way of saying it? Okay, so can I see, can we, I think it it would probably help to reference that?
It's the chart, but with the BA lane salaries.
Right, so it's not other jurisdictions, well, it's a, it's a, okay.
But I believe Ms. Palchek did.
Oh, she also did as well, okay.
And we could provide anything related to the BA lanes during the budget work session in March?
Okay, so let's, but I think because you you want that on on the, in short chart form, okay, so provide the
Yes, and I have that noted here in the notes.
Okay, and is the reference slide six?
Yes, she referenced slide six. BA chart, same as on page six.
Okay.
But Sandy?
Yeah, yes, uh huh.
I I'd like to reference slide seven as well because I know from hearing from our teacher groups, they provided me with the chart that's on seven where it shows actually where the steps are in in each of those jurisdictions, Loudoun and Prince William, for example, and their steps go all the way up to like between twenty-eight and thirty. So if slide six won't show us that in terms of comparability of what happens to our bachelor teachers where they cap out at of what happens to our bachelor teachers where they cap out at 19 or 20...
We'll take it up to the maximum.
So does, does that capture that?
Of the other jurisdictions.
That second part of it?
I, I think you're, in order to be able to see that, you just, we need something that resembles more than 7, not... You're, that little graph line is not going to help us understand the surrounding jurisdictions.
So on Slide 6, where we have the market average, we will take the market average all the way to Step 30, which, which should align with the maximum of the other jurisdictions.
Can I ask for one clarification on that chart?
Sure.
You have at the bottom, the proposed FY19 market average with total compensation. Can we not get the total compensation at the halfway mark of that, below the FY18 scale?
Which, which one are you on now, Elizabeth?
The same, Chart 6. Like, if they're going to give it to us, I'd, I'd like them to add total compensation for the FY18 scale.
Sure, and it's approximately 4 percentage points higher.
Adding, you've got total compensation at the bottom for proposed, but I want the total compensation now.
Okay.
So Ms. Evans, to, to my request, that was from Ms. Corbett Sanders, why I'm referencing Slide 7. Dr. Brabran, I don't want all of this detail, obviously, that's on Slide 7, where it's showing the steps and it's showing what percentage, we don't need all that, but we do need to see a chart that says, if you work in Loudoun County with a bachelor's degree, you're going to have your step that's going to run up to, let's say, it's 28, and it gives the, the salary that they get at each of those steps.
So you want to see salary as opposed to percentage increase? Because right now on 7...
This one, exactly. The chart looks like that, but instead, it's going to say, here's the step, and then based on where you are with your bachelor, bachelor 15, bachelor 30, this is what your, your compensation is.
So that's one...
Yeah.
That's a different thing then.
That's a different thing.
So we had talked about the numbers of employees. Elizabeth's thing was the numbers of employees at each step.
Right.
Then the other one was, I can't believe, I'm blanking for a second, you wanted the... Right. And now, you're talking about really a separate chart that just says on what step, what that salary looks like. So, so somebody can compare and go, okay, on this new proposal, I'm on Step 10 here in Fairfax, what does that look like for Step 10 over in Loudoun? Right?
Yeah, I mean...
For teacher to teacher?
Right, right, is that, so if we're...
Almost like a, a chart that would help an employee go, hm, let me really see what I'm going to get with this deal, and look at what Step 10 looks like over in Loudoun or Prince William.
Right, because we're, we're wanting to understand what changes are we making to our bachelors, you know, that, that impact our...
Okay. You just want, she's just saying she...
I think that's a separate thing, so can we finish with Bullet 2 before we go to yours? Because I think what you're asking for is something different. Isn't it something different?
So what I had heard, I thought I heard Dahlia and myself, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders all saying is, in preparation for the presentation we're going to get on our bachelor salary changes, we want to see, well, what, how's that comparative, what the compensation is right now for bachelor teachers in the other jurisdictions?
Is that what you were looking for?
It's a Matt Damon quote, "You like apples? You like dumb apples."
Well, Karen, Karen, is that what, is that what you wanted as opposed to what's up there now?
I'm perfectly fine with what's up there. That is to that information, if additional granularity...
If additional granularity helps everybody else, I think that might be helpful. My, the end goal is, I want to be able to make informed decisions so that we put the money where our mouth is, that allows us to attract and retain the best teachers, and that we don't create an environment where we have a disincentive for groups of teachers from coming here.
Right, Megan, you want a chart that has the salaries by steps with the new market adjustments added in? So you can see what that looks like. That's what you're talking about, right?
No, actually, that's why I didn't want to make this too complicated. It's basically saying that in order for me to make an informed decision on what we're doing to our bachelor teachers and the later part of the step, I just want to see, what does Loudoun County have in terms of...
You just want to see the salary scales from neighborhood?
Salary scales from the neighboring jurisdictions for bachelors.
Done.
Yep.
Okay, but I do, but I do think that's a separate thing. That's a, that's a separate bullet. So can we, can we approve 2, or see how many people? Before we go to Megan's issue, let's see a show of hands of how many people support doing Bullet 2. Okay, that's a majority. So let, while we're talking about it, let's go to Megan's issue before we forget what we're doing.
BA salary scales.
Yeah, and it's BA.
Yep.
Salary scales. And do you want all? Do you want it BA plus 15, BA plus 30, or all three?
However, that jurisdiction breaks it out.
However, that jurisdiction, okay.
And, and I don't need a graph, I just...
You just want to see, you want to see the numbers?
I want to see their chart.
Okay.
But I would obviously like ours as an overlay. So here's Fairfax County's chart, and then here's, here's what...
Provided one for FY18, so I could give you a sample of what that looked like, and then we could just update the 19 scale on that chart.
Yeah, and the big thing is, has always been that having it in the materials that we're looking at at that time, because sometimes we'll get, oh, we gave it to you guys a year ago, I'm not going to be able to find it.
Okay, well, let's see how many people can support that last bullet then. How many people? Scott's saying yes, oh, good, thank you. All right, so we can then go on to, Elizabeth has a couple, provide number of teachers at each step on chart of combined increase. Okay, so you want the number of teachers, not the percentage, you want raw numbers. Okay, how many people can...
What's from the left table to be reflected in the right table?
How many people can support that? Okay, that's done. On separate pages, expand Table 7 to reflect actual numbers, not just, wait, I thought we just did that.
It is, it's just a description of how to, in other words, make these things big enough.
Elizabeth, are those two different things, or should we, should we eliminate number 2 or number 3?
Eliminate that.
Okay, all right, because we, you got it, okay, great. Share schedule of employee organizations meeting. Ms. Danette Kofax, I thought you were suggesting we do them more often, no? You just want to see them?
Well, I, I want to make sure that according to our policy, that we're doing it bi-monthly, which is every other month, and I'd like to see the agendas. Share agenda and schedule of employee organization meetings.
And I just, I did look up the policy. The policy says we will do them every other month, which I thought they were quarterly, but they're every other month, which is kind of close to that, I guess, but...
Right, we have another one coming.
Agenda of the board member, the rotation.
Yeah, and if we can have the rotation of the board members attending, so we know who to follow up with, so we don't have to keep burdening the chair if we have information.
And, and you want the agendas as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, so share agendas and schedule of employer, the 45-10. Okay, how many people can support that? Okay, it looks like we then are finished, thank you for...
Evans, clarification on Ms. Schultz's revised bullet. Ms. Schultz, I thought you wanted not just the number of teachers on each step of the chart, but also then the cost associated.
Oh, that's right. You said cost as well. And cost of... Of, of what, bonuses? Cost of...
I think she wanted the cost estimates for each of those.
For each category of employee.
But cost estimate of what? A bonus? A bonus? Okay, so cost estimate for each category...
Numbers and dollars.
But, but for, but for...
But dollars for just the grandfathered employees and the employees on the maximum.
But cost estimates for bonuses for, correct?
Whatever we've costed.
Yeah, so we need to add...
We haven't picked an amount, so they're going to have to tell us, say, hey, if you do 1%...
It says cost estimates for employees, we don't cost out employees, we cost out bonuses for employees.
For each category of, it's for, for the grandfathered and maximum-salaried employees reflected in the table.
Right, but the cost estimate is for bonuses for them? Yes, okay.
So Ms. Schultz, you're not wanting the cost estimate. If we look at Chart 7, I mean, if, if you look at Slide 7 on those two charts, it shows the percent of employees who are going to get a certain increase. But it doesn't say how much is in dollar values it's going to cost for each group of those. So right now, you're just asking for grandfathered employees and maximum salary. You're not asking for the other categories?
No, because we're usually given a dollar value in terms of millions per percentage that we can figure out for everyone else.
Okay.
So...
So I guess you...
Right now...
That will be built into whatever MSA, so it's a...
So right now, what's shown on that chart is the investment of $53.1 million and the step costs for the teachers, which I believe was little over $30 million out of the 44 we have in the budget. So it includes both that step and the salary scale investment. That's how the money is being spread on that chart.
It's 7.9 million per 1%. So we, we already know what the cost is for the others. But because we don't have an attributed dollar value to the, to those outside of that category, that's why I'm saying, we need the, we need the numbers, the numbers of employees, and we need the money, because this is a budget discussion.
Okay, so Ms. Quinn, you understand that?
Yeah, I understand it, but just one clarity, the 1% of 7.9 million is for non-teachers. 1% of the teacher pool is $14 million.
Okay.
$14 million.5, bro, correct me.
Very good. Well, Mr. Smith and Mr. Gustafson, thank you so much for joining us. Ms. Quinn, I believe you will be back for the next session. So, very...